We'll now reconvene the regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council from closed session for Tuesday, June 4th, 2019. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Cordova.
Present.
Mayor Protam Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here. City Attorney, any closed action, any report on closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council did meet in closed session tonight. They did not discuss the first item on the agenda, the labor negotiations. That was tabled for a later date. They did discuss the second item on the agenda, real property negotiations regarding 82 acres, including an adjacent to Ken Adam Park. Staff had a discussion with the council and the council gave direction, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Now, if you'll please rise and join us, the invocation will be by Pastor Kathleen Puntar, and then we will have the Pledge of Allegiance following that.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council members and community. I appreciate this opportunity to pray for our City Council and for Lompoc. I'm going to be leaving Lompoc at the end of June, and I will miss it and the people and my church here, and I will carry with me many memories and joy. But I want to thank Mayor Osborne and the City Council for continuing to allow invocations at City Council meetings. Will you join me in prayer? Gracious God, Lord of all nations, we recently celebrated Memorial Day. May we continue to reflect upon our blessings as a nation and the high cost of those blessings. Thank you for the freedom we enjoy in this country for opportunities to flourish. Thank you for those who have served in the armed forces of our country, risking their lives for our liberty, and thank you for those who have given their lives in service to our country, sacrificing in such a costly way for the sake of others. And thank you for those who have given their lives so that those who live in other countries might experience freedom from tyranny. And even as we remember those who have given their lives in the past, we also think of those whose lives are on the line this very day. Protect them, encourage them, strengthen them, bring them home safely and soon. We ask, oh God, that you would be with all impacted by the mass shooting in Virginia Beach. We pray for the families who had their loved ones murdered. We pray for those critically injured. We ask for guidance to address the gun violence in our nation. And we pray about violence and crime in our own community of Lompoc. We pray, oh God, for an end to pain, suffering, injustice, and violence in our world. We also pray for all who are targets of prejudice and harassment and abuse. Help us to be those who stand up against those who would bully others and those who stand up for understanding and respect. Be with the leaders of our community, especially those in front of us this night, our mayor, the City Council and staff. Bless them with your guidance and direction. Help them to make decisions not based on political gain or on personal gain, but on what is best for the people of this community. May these decisions make people safe and protected and secure. I pray that you would gift them with the sensitivity to listen attentively and to do what is right for all who love our valley. All praise to you, God of grace, God of mercy, God of justice, and God of peace. Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we did have one presentation elsewhere. Police Chief Joe Mariani presented a proclamation recognizing Lompoc's Alma Sina Sana Community Food Center on its second anniversary at El Camino School on May 22nd, 2019, and I want to thank him for doing that. Not only did we present it, but we made sure that it was translated into Spanish and that he did present it in Spanish. So I think that was a really important step in our community is to be a witness and support the bilingual nature of our community and recognize being able to communicate what was happening in both languages. So, thank you, Chief Mariani, for doing that. Our current proclamation is to honor June being named LGBTQ Pride Month. So those of you receiving the proclamation, please join me at the podium. And before I read the proclamation, I think it's really important that this is the first time we have ever done this in the city of Lompoc. This is something that is of personal importance to me. I have family members who are transgender. I have family members who are gay. And recognizing those that are in need of being recognized and supported and showing them that they are as important to us in our community as anywhere else in the world is the first step.
That's right.
So I appreciate your willingness to pull this together and be here tonight. So, recognizing June as LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of Lompoc, whereas the city of Lompoc has a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer community, and is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equity for all people in the community. And whereas many of the residents, students, city employees, and business owners within the city of Lompoc who contribute to the enrichment of our city are a part of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning community. And whereas the annual California AIDS life cycle ride between San Francisco and Los Angeles chose Lompoc as an overnight stop on this seven-day ride, this event brings hundreds of riders and thousands of dollars to Lompoc each June. And whereas June 28th, 2019 celebrates the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall riots, during these riots LGBTQ citizens rose up and fought against the discriminatory criminal laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. Whereas several cities across the United States recognize and celebrate June as LGBTQ Pride Month, and whereas June has become a symbolic month in which LGBTQ community members and supporters come together in a variety of celebrations of pride and social justice. And whereas the rainbow flag, also known as LGBTQ pride flag or gay pride flag, has been used since the 1970s as a symbol of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer pride and LGBTQ social movements. Now therefore I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby declare the month of June as LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of Lompoc as well, and invite everyone to reflect on the ways we can all live and work together with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding and recognizing Pride Month during the month of June. Absolutely.
I'm Jane Quant, and tonight I'm here with the Lompoc Pride Alliance. We're made up of LGBTQ plus folk and their allies, and together we are quite simply committed to making Lompoc a safer, more welcoming and affirming place for members of the LGBT community. Noah, you're also going to say something.
I'm Noah Wagner, and before I get to how important this proclamation is for the city, I want to let everybody know that Lompoc Pride Alliance has teamed up with Acronym Project, and we're going to be doing a two-hour introductory conversation about the LGBTQ community this Saturday, right here in City Council chambers, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. It is free. It's open to the public, so please, please come. I cannot fully express how important this proclamation is for the city of Lompoc to recognize its LGBTQ plus members, particularly on the 50th anniversary month of the Stonewall uprising, which was led by transgender women of color against forces that sought to silence and erase the LGBT community. It is so hard to stand up and use your voice when your voice is silenced and when it goes unheard. So thank you, Mayor Osborne, for hearing us. Thank you, Lompoc, for hearing us. And if there's anyone wondering if there are LGBTQ folks living in Lompoc, can you hear us now?
And if there are, for those LGBTQ plus folk in the room, we simply say, be proud, be proud. There are others here to support this. Would you also please stand if you want to stand and just support this? Please.
Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen, for being here this evening. City manager, report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Excuse me. I only had one item tonight, and that was to attempt to schedule our next budget workshop. I was going to find out if I can get confirmation as to whether Monday, June 24th, at 6:30 p.m. here in the chambers, would work for the council members. So if you have a nod, a show of hands, is there anyone that can't make it? Okay. So I think we...
I hear one. Good. There's two. Councilmember Mosby nodded. Okay. And Councilmember Vega? Okay. On that note, before we move off of it, given the decision that was made regarding that budget, I want to ask Council to consider reconsideration of the recommendation. And before I put that forward, I'd like to make sure the public understands why I'm asking for that reconsideration. Councilmember Vega lectured the council about the need to pass a balanced budget prior to considering a sales tax measure, but council majority failed and recommended a budget with a deficit that's over $300,000. Councilmember Mosby waived the city financial policies in our faces and asked if we'd read them, and yes, I have. And it says in the reserve document, that the general fund reserve document, that where the forecast shows an ongoing structural gap and providing a strategic bridge to the future, you may use it, but it follows immediately with, on the other hand, reserves should not be used to fund ongoing costs or projected systemic gaps. And $300,000 is a systemic gap and should not be utilizing general fund reserves, especially given how low they are. So stalling that budget would dip into those low general fund reserves and not be a strategic bridge because in two years we'll have the same problem. And finally, Councilmember Starbuck, all the way at the beginning of these discussions, absolutely stated that he didn't want to hurt the community by making cuts and eliminating funds to external groups like the school district, or the museum, or the chamber, and that he absolutely didn't want to damage public safety. And yet, this recommendation does damage public safety and does damage the chamber. So I ask the council to reconsider the vote in recommending Budget Option Four, since it damages public safety by not filling those open police positions, that it reduces the ability for fire to respond to medical emergencies, and that we took an oath to preserve. And it damages that community that we said we weren't going to. So prior to any discussions on this reconsideration, and per our City Council handbook, this motion requires a second, and then we can have discussion on whether or not you are willing to dismiss the current direction and return budget discussion to a future agenda item with different direction. So I'm looking for a second on the reconsideration vote. Councilmember Cordova.
I would, I would motion for a second on that because I do think that we can come to a better resolution than what we came to. And I think it's very important for, there's no doubt about it in my mind, that we're all going to have to give up something, but I think that we can come together and bring something that is much more, that is, that is better in overall for the community.
Thank you. So it's been moved. It's been seconded. The floor is now open for discussion and willingness to bring back for cancellation of that prior vote. Councilmember Starbuck.
I wasn't expecting all this, but Mr. Albro, let me put you on the spot. Could we just discuss public safety? How much was actually added to public safety?
If you go year over year, the police department was left alone. We had three vacancies last time, and we have three vacancies this time. The fire department, even though we said they were reducing the amount of overtime, we actually increased it from what we gave them last year by $65,000 per year for overtime, but we still took away the battalion chief.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Mr. Thru, maybe we could talk about where we were at $71,000 and some of the things that have happened. There's also some funds that hadn't been accounted for into the budget. So if we could enlighten on that, please.
So if I'm understanding, the last meeting, we ended up with about a $71,000. Option Four was about $71,000 short, which is something we could, we could fix. We also then, at the end, though, pulled off Step F and the certification pay for the fire. So that was $189,000, as well as the, about $60-some thousand for the other piece. Converting the PIO from a PIO to, say, a grant writing position actually added, I don't recall off the top of my head, but that, it did add to the general fund, just because the PIO is allocated out, the grant writer wouldn't be allocated out except if they were doing a grant for utilities or something. And that did come up to about, talking with Mr. Albro, about a $300,000 deficit then. Does that answer the question?
Councilmember Mosby.
Mr. Albro, in the fact that we have, what, 28 positions that were currently held, was the likelihood of those 28 positions being filled within the next six months?
Gabe could probably answer that better, our HR director, but I'm pretty sure it'd take a while. Yeah.
And so my question is, as well as, so the budget that put together, even though there is a potential of using $300,000 of our reserve, what is the likelihood of really truly using that $300,000 reserve, being the fact that we have so many vacancies and taking so long with the unemployment rate the way it is, to fill those vacant positions?
We do have approximately 18 positions, if you add up how many we have in the budget proposal in Option Four. I would imagine that would take at least six months, and it'd probably, with a hand wave, probably pretty close to balancing out the budget, pretty close.
Right. So mathematically, the equation shows us using reserve, but the likelihood of using it is probably less likely we're going to use it?
Yeah, especially given that we have a lot of vacant, or a few vacancies that just popped up in police, yes.
Right. And with the budget that we proposed, of the 28 positions that you did the equation here the other day, eight or nine of those that were frozen will actually be able to fill?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. I think answering the question as well, what, what was the amount of money we increased the budget to the police department from year to year?
I'd have to look that up. I know it's, it's, I'd have to look it up. I'm not sure exactly.
About a million?
Maybe, yeah.
Right in there somewhere.
I mean, because the UAL component was going up, and there's raises in there, and it compounds, so yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova.
Based on my calculations, to answer the question of my fellow councilmembers, Starbuck and Mosby, if I'm looking at the expenditures, you're looking at an increase of $1.5 million for police and $3.3 million for fire. And on that point is why I think that we can come to a compromise without necessarily doing certain cuts to certain departments because I think if we look at the actual numbers that were provided on that day, maybe there's, there's, there's room there for improvement of our negotiations with what we have for cuts.
Counsel?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, and sorry to interrupt. I know that a motion to reconsider has been made, and I know that the council is allowed to debate that motion, but there is a fine line between debating the motion to reconsider and getting into a full discussion of the budget. So I want to caution the council, we are only supposed to be debating whether we're going to reconsider the past action, and the reasons for that are fine to talk about. I think we're going fine so far, but I don't want to get into a full-on budget discussion.
Thank you for that clarification. Any further discussion by council? Then I will ask for a vote to reconsider and bring back the discussion at a future agenda to drive a different solution. Please vote. And that fails 3-2. Thank you for considering. Agenda at hand, we have consent calendar. All items listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communications near the end of the meeting. Public comment on consent calendar is now open for three minutes per speaker. If you have something on consent calendar you would like to speak to, please come to the podium. Seeing no one rise, we'll close that discussion and bring it back to council. Councilmember Starbuck.
I move we accept the consent calendar.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And Mr. Vega seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. And now we have safety presentation from Safety Officer Joe Cavanaugh regarding the Above and Beyond Awards. Thank you.
Mayor, council, staff, audience, and citizens watching, it's again my great pleasure to present the third quarter Above and Beyond Awards that are given by the Central Safety Committee. Our first nominees are Chris Silva and Ernesto Lemus Jr. from the Streets Department. Chris and Ernesto responded to a call made by a resident who was trapped in her home by a tumbleweed that blew into her porch. The tumbleweed was actually larger than her front door, and that was her only access in and out of her house. So they cleaned, they cut up the tumbleweed, cleaned it up, removed the debris, and she was grateful because now she could get in and out of her house. Our next nomination is for John Heater from Water, Patrice Barrett, Phil Alberto Ramirez, and Peter Almata from Solid Waste. John Heater observed a flatbed tow truck that had spilled a load of used motor oil at the intersection of North I Street and West College. John stopped and placed caution cones to keep motorists out of the spill. Patrice Barrett was passing by in her collection vehicle, and she used her spill kit that they store in each one of the vehicles to start cleaning up the spill. They, while they were, excuse me, while they diverted traffic, they called for additional help, and Peter Almata and Phil Alberto Ramirez responded to the spill with absorbent and a sweeper to clean up all of the debris. Another nomination is for Joanna Canard and Mario Guerrero from Recreation, and this is for the excellent father-daughter dance that they provided, which is something, as I quote, "It's a special treat to make great memories with our daughters." Phil Alberto Ramirez is again recommended for an award. He is recognized for his assistance after a motor vehicle accident during morning commute on Ocean and Seventh Avenue. A vehicle ran into the back of a citizen's vehicle, resulting in a crushed front end and some damage to the back of the second vehicle. Phil Alberto noticed the accident and used his collection vehicle with its flashers to divert traffic away from the accident and secured the scene. Visibly shaken, he assisted both drivers of the vehicles to make sure there were no injuries, and he helped them document the accident and get it all cleaned up. And last but not least, Edgar Solis and Peter Almata from Solid Waste are recommended. They were first on the scene for a hit-and-run accident where a vehicle struck and sheared off a utility pole on V Street and North Avenue. It was a hit-and-run. The vehicle was just left, and the driver took off. They secured the area until Lompoc police could respond by blocking the intersections with their city vehicles and emergency lights. They remained on-site until Lompoc police completed their investigation, and Lompoc Electric responded to make the area safe and replace the power pole. Again, it's my great pleasure. We have a lot of wonderful employees.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cavanaugh, for bringing those to our attention. We really appreciate all the hard work that our city employees go above and beyond. And now we'll have a presentation from the library director, Sarah Blile, regarding upcoming summer activities at the library.
Hello, Mayor, City Council, and everybody at home. I am here to talk about the best time of the year, which is summer, and the summer reading program at the library. And here we go. Okay. So, summer reading program kicked off June 1st, which was Saturday. We had our first program, and our theme this year is it's showtime at the library. We have programs for all ages, summer activities for all ages. These are all free to the public. Some of the fun things that we have, Zoo to You, where they actually bring animals that the kids can see. We've got a reptile show, science and magic shows, craft club, art programs, movies. If you want to see our schedule, you can come by and pick one up at either of the library branches, or go online, follow us on Facebook. And I just wanted to show just a little bit how, how popular we are with everybody here in town. So over the last four years, you can see our numbers have steadily increased. 2015, we had about 900 people participate, and last year we had over 2,000. So we would love it very much if we hit 2,500 this year. We also usually sign up more than Santa Maria Library, which I love to bring up to them because Lompoc loves their library. So we had almost 4,000 people attend a program last year, which is pretty amazing. And like I said, all ages, so there's fun stuff for teens and adults, as well as just the kids. Though, I'm telling you, some of these magic shows are great even for adults. I enjoy them. So there's a reason why we have summer reading programs. Part of it is literacy, and part of it is, you know, so the kids have something to do when they're home all day. But I just want to show, this is a quick video that the Department of Education had come up with, just showing the difference between kids that have access to reading and literacy programs during the summer and those that don't. So, oops, it didn't play. How do I play it? Sorry.
Let's look at two children, one from a middle-income family, the other from one of the millions of low-income American families. As the two kids head off to kindergarten, look what happens. The middle-income child starts out with a six-month lead. The low-income child is already falling behind because of a lack of access to early reading and preschool education. During their year in kindergarten, in the same school and classroom, the two children will learn at about the same rate, so will move them both forward nine months. But look what happens in that first summer between kindergarten and first grade. Our middle-income child moves ahead about a month in reading because learning of one kind or another continues over the summer. The low-income child falls back about two months. So when school begins again, when they go back for first grade, the gap between them has already widened. During first grade, again, they move ahead at about the same rate, another nine months. That next summer, the activities and lifestyle of the middle-income family keep that child moving forward, but the low-income child... moving forward, but the low-income child has fewer opportunities to reinforce good habits like reading and that child falls farther behind. Then we come to second grade, and again, our two children learn at the same rate. But the summer after second grade sets our low-income child back again and our middle-income child moves forward again and the gap widens again. By just the third grade, the two children are already far apart. By the end of fifth grade, the gap between the children is two and a half to three years. It will keep growing through middle school. So you see, without addressing what's happening during the summer, it is impossible to ever catch up. It's impossible to close the gap. No matter how much high-quality learning goes on from September to June, every year the gap widens.
So, thank you for giving me the minute to do that. That is one of the reasons why we promote literacy so strongly in the library during the summer months. The programs are free. When kids sign up, they get a free book to take right away. We don't expect them to finish the entire program right away. We give them a book for their home library. So many kids don't have access to books at home. When I was growing up, I could read so fast that I couldn't, my parents couldn't keep up, even if we'd had the money. So I would check out hundreds of books from the library every year and that is how my family dealt with the gap between what a middle-income family was and what we were as a lower-income family. And so it's, it's very important, I encourage all of you to sign up. A lot of the kids are really, they think it's fun if their parents sign up too, so please, grandmas, grandpas, parents, bring your kids in and sign up and they'll, they'll enjoy that. They get to compete against you. Okay. Now I broke it, Brad. Sorry. It won't go to the next one. Okay. So with the summer reading program, one of the things that helps fund it are grants. We, the Friends of the Library are our main funding source, so if you're supporting the Friends of the Library by buying books at the book sales, then you're helping fund summer reading program for us. We also do apply for lots of grants every year to try to supplement that. Lunch at the Library, which is a popular program where we do feed children ages zero to 18 during the summer, and that is, the Lompoc School, Unified School District prepares the food and we're just a site where kids can come eat. Because we're participating in that, the California Library Association gave us a $2,000 grant, which is great because that pays for programming supplies and it also pays for those giveaways that I was telling you about. Kids can come, sign up, get a free book to take home. That's where that money is going to be used. The Graphic Novel Book Club was a really popular thing that the Bookmobile did last year that they're actually going to be doing at the main library as well. We received a $3,000 grant from the California State Library and $1,200 from Dollar General. And then the Adult Craft Club, because everybody likes to create, even adults, we were able to apply and we received a $6,000 grant through the United States Institute of Museum and Library Services and it's administered by the California State Library. So we are going to be having programs at both Lompoc and at the Village Library for adults to create different crafts. So here's a little pitch for Lunch at the Library. Starting June 17th through August 2nd, we'll be having lunch Mondays through Thursdays from noon to 1:00 PM and snack Monday through Friday at 3:30. And this is free to all children, zero to 18. All they have to do is show up and eat. The food's provided by LUSD and last year we weren't able to do it because they were, their kitchen was getting fixed, but we are back on track. So we are one of several sites in Lompoc that will be providing lunch for kids at the library. The Graphic Novel Book Club, it's something that was started at Charlotte's Web Mobile Children's Library. It's a free summer reading program for nine-to-12-year-olds. They will receive a free graphic novel book. Now, graphic novels sometimes get a bad rap, but the thing is, is that they are teaching children how to draw context from the pictures. So even if their reading isn't quite up where it is, they can still understand what's happening because they can see the pictures. It also teaches them really good skills like reading facial expressions, so they can see, okay, that someone is angry, I can tell that. And that helps them when they're learning different words to connect the visual with the text. So they will receive a free book of the, the different books we're doing. They get to meet on the Bookmobile to discuss those different graphic novels and then we have them meet the author via Skype or another kind of online video chat. And so the kids, the great thing about this last year is that the kids started off like just asking basic questions and by the end they wanted to know about the authors too and they had really connected the fact that I am looking at this book and someone wrote it and someone drew it. And they, there was kids that were drawing their own comic books after that, which is amazing. That's a really great way to, for kids, especially ones that are maybe not so interested in reading, it's a great way for them to, it's kind of like a gateway drug, we don't really call it that to parents, but it, it is a way to get kids into books. So, and a lot, if you, most of the, not most, but a lot of the authors that are really prolific, Stephen King comes to mind. He loved comic books when he was growing up and that was what led him into writing some really creepy stuff that we all enjoy. Sorry. He is my favorite author. Stephen King, come to Lompoc. Okay. And then I just want to give a big thank you to all of our sponsors. We have such a generous community. We go to them every year and we say, please, can we have something to give people that are participating in this program? And so I just want to read these off real quick like I do every year, but thank you so much to the Friends of the Library, Alfie's Fish and Chips, Applebee's, The Rice Bowl, Super Grill, El Pumar, Thai Cuisine, Herb Home Thai Restaurant, Johnson's Donuts, Old Town Kitchen and Bar, Taco's El Tison, Bella Florist and Home Decor, Thai Fast Food, Sissy's Uptown Cafe, The Beach, La Michoacana, Florianos Mexican Food, Mi Amore, Round Table Pizza, Yogurt Creations, Foster's Donuts, Bravo Pizza, Vargas Jewelers, One Room Escapes and Coffee, Lompoc Jewelry, Just Too Sweet Candy Creations and Events, Tom's, Lompoc Valley Florist and Home Decor, Teaklish Boba and Cafe, Sake Sushi and Korean Barbecue, Chile's Zibotanas Family Mesa, I'm not exactly sure why the fam is, anyway. Lompoc Valley Seed and Milling, The Garden Shop, Chipotle, Gymnastics North, Legoland, Surf Connection, and Walmart. These are amazing. Every year they are so generous to us to give us prizes that we can give out to all the participants. So thank you so much for being a sponsor of the summer reading program with the City of Lompoc Library. And that is all I have. Just come to the library, find some books. We've already had about 350 people sign up since Saturday, so I love that. I love to see kids reading and the adults, we've got some really great prizes for them as well. So if you have any questions, if not, thank you for this time.
Any questions for Sarah? Thank you, Sarah, for putting on an amazing program and seeing the increase every summer and I look forward to seeing many more children addicted to reading. It's a good gateway drug.
Yes.
Thank you for working so hard on that. Next on the agenda is oral communications. This is three minutes of oral communication to any item of city responsibility and if it is regarding an issue further on the agenda, consider waiting till that.
Dear Andrews, Mission Hills, I fully support the library and reading programs for children, but a part of the discussion should always be that our public schools are failing to teach reading effectively. Phonics is the way to teach reading. We have the brain research. There's a column online, "America Has A Serious Reading Problem." By me, Santa Maria Times, you can read about the brain research and what they're doing in schools. They're teaching sight words. That's not the reading side of the brain. Phonics is on the left side. The reason the pictures and the facial expressions are so important to children to try and understand what's going on is because they have not been taught how to read. They have been taught to memorize sight words. California public education is almost dead last in the nation. It's like 48th, used to be number one. And that difference is because they stopped teaching reading effectively. I appreciate what she's doing at the library, it's wonderful, but we need to start talking about teaching our children how to read. It's very important. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Lynn Smith. I have been a resident of this city for 32 years. Recently, a member of this council suggested that going through this budget was a very difficult for the public to grasp. I'm sorry, I do not agree with that. Over the last couple of months, many people have come to this podium to make comments about the budget. Some have been emotional and that's okay, but the, there's also been people who are very articulate, business owners, former council members, even a CEO of an international company, and I suspect he knows a few things about budgets. I actually studied to become a city manager and have a bachelor's degree in the subject. Maybe I don't know everything there is about our particular budget, but there is one thing I know for sure about budgets. Budgets are more than numbers. Budgets represent hope and a plan for the future. The budget you have now does neither. This budget gives no hope to the city employee who wants to make a career here in Lompoc. It gives no hope to someone wanting to start a business here. It doesn't even give hope to residents who want to live here in a safe community. This budget has no plan to address homelessness, gang violence, employee retention, infrastructure repairs, safety and aesthetics of our parks, or economic development. This budget does not even address the number-one financial problem we have here, our CalPERS obligation. During the last couple of months, I've heard several suggestions about how we could save money or even raise money. Grants, combining city departments and services, contracting for services, cannabis, placing advertising banners on the side of fire trucks, and I'm not endorsing that. And of course layoffs and cutting services. But only one suggestion comes anywhere close to addressing the budget woes and giving the people of this city a hope and a plan for the future, and that is a one-cent sales tax increase. It would be great when you pass a budget if it had some hope in it. However, again, the staff's need to start building the budget book now, it's probably too late for that as of now. But it's not too late for you to offer some hope by placing the question of a one-cent sales tax on the next ballot. Please do this in time for the next election. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Charles Blair. I live in Vanderburg Village and I, I live in one of the unincorporated portions of Lompoc Valley. And I, as I've mentioned this at the budget hearing previously, I do not consider a 1% increase in sales tax. Councilman, in one of the council, in a letter to the editor in last week's, Councilman Mosby, pardon me, letter to the editor in, previously, mentioned that there was a, would be 100% increase, the implication was it was going to be 100% increase in the, in the, in the, in the payment. I did the math. My understanding is we, of the seven, 7.45 sales tax we currently pay, 1% goes to Lompoc. If we add 1%, if we add the 1%, the way, when I, the way I did the math, it's a 1.3 increase in what you pay in the store. And as I say, I, I'm perfectly willing to pay that and as a resident of the valley, we, we in the valley, we in the, in the greater Lompoc Valley depend on, on safety issues, police and fire, which are understaffed, library services, which you're having to cut, and again, the Lompoc Branch Library, the Village Branch Library does get some from the, from the funds that somebody is getting. Chamber of Commerce does a great job of promoting enforcement. The other thing, one of the suggestions I did see was freezing, freezing hiring and freezing further increases. As I said before, if we're going to attract and maintain, retain competent people, we have to pay them adequately and give them some room for growth. And again, I implore, as the previous speaker, that we give Lompoc a chance to vote on that. Now, I can vote, I cannot vote in the city, but I can vote with my feet and my checkbook. And remember, we, we in the village, in, we, we, we're part of the Unified School District, we're part of the Hospital District, we're part of the Cemetery District, and we're part of Allen Hancock. So we do pay our share for that and, and again, I'm willing to come into town and pay my share for the services. And I thank you.
Mayor and City Council, I'm sure by now you know who I am, but just in case you've forgotten, I'm Judy McKinnon. I've been a resident for over 40 years. I consider this my home. After living all over the US, I chose to come here and settle. And my remarks are directed to the council majority, as usual. You are ruining this lovely little city with your refusal to listen to the voice of reason from city staff or Lompoc's caring citizens. I have to wonder what makes you three, always in cahoots when it comes to conducting city business, think you know more than anyone else on the staff or among your constituents out here who vote. I'm amazed, I marvel, at the fancy footwork that brings you three into such consistent agreement. It's almost as if you have telepathic powers. Or maybe the Brown Act is just a, an idea for you. I wonder what your training is, that you can rely so confidently on your own questionable judgment. Mr. Vega, at the last budget session, ventured his opinion that none of us in the audience could possibly understand the intricacies of the budget the way he does. I can't speak for everyone who was there, but I know quite a few of them and they're no dummies. My own training, though a long time ago, so long ago that we didn't have access to personal computers and had to rely on slide rules and our own brains, was in higher mathematics. True, not accounting, but it's still math. My feeling is that the city staff could walk me through the budget just fine and I think that could happen for anybody else who was in the audience that night. Mr. Vega demonstrated his contempt for everyone in the room except for his two buddies on the city council. And don't think we don't notice that, over and over again. Mr. Mosby's gobbledygook about a 1% increase in the sales tax doubling the sales tax when he knows better seems to be an early attempt to persuade the voters that they can't afford it. Of course, their math skills might be above first-grade level. Remember that. Thank you.
My name is Keith Fikeert. I'm a resident of Lompoc. I actually came to you guys today as representative of, I'm the president of the Experimental Aircraft Association, Lompoc Chapter 275. That's mouthful. Basically, my concern that I'm trying to bring up to the council today is that the hangar rents have been going up 10% every year for the last few years and we're now expected to get another 10% increase effective on July 1st. The reason I bring this up is the Experimental Aircraft Association is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and we host the West Coast Cub Flyin' every year. This brings over 100 aircraft to our community from across the country as well as well over, you know, a couple thousand visitors from both within our community and surrounding communities. This brings heads to beds. It's really good for our hotel industry here in town and these increases on the hangars are causing a, a pressure on our organization that we don't, because we store all of the, the equipment and the tables and the chairs for this event in the hangar and so having the equipment and the tables and the chairs for this event in the hangar, and so having to house it for about the entire year, just to bring it out for three days, which is going to be on July 12th, 13th, and 14th, just a little plug there, that, you know, this is kind of becoming an undue hardship. So I don't know what it's going to be to, to get on an agenda to discuss it, to see if a 501(c)(3) can get some kind of relief in their hangar rents. As an organization, we already upped our membership dues 50% to try to help with this, but with this other 10% increase coming in July, it's just, it's becoming too much. So other than that, my other bit was, I'm sure a lot of you guys are familiar too with the Lompoc Valley Beekeepers Association. They do amazing work. The president, Jim Rice, just had a recent article in the Lompoc Record, which is fantastic. They're doing so much to educate the community and to preserve bees which are being threatened. And so, on the same note of how do we get it on an agenda, allowing bees and having apiaries in city limits, which is currently not allowed, but cities such as Santa Maria allow for, for beekeeping, as well as the counties. So if there's some way we can come up with a way to get people to register so we know where apiaries are and have safe practices, that kind of thing. So anyway, those are just my two little things, and thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council of George King. Been here 34 years. I thought I had to wear a helmet tonight. Last meeting was very strong. I didn't know it was getting a little outrageous tonight or not. I think everybody realizes that this town is not very nice with good police and fire. I also want to let everybody know here, I've been here 34 years, and these people in the council are all friends of mine. I've known them for a long time. We have good times together, but there were five people here with a job to do. The only thing I see in the last few weeks, everybody says the same thing: yes, no, yes, no, I don't know, I'm not too sure, it's the same thing. Last week, it got a little bad because some of the people got very hostile with their language, and it's time for reconstructing what's going on. I think the council needs to get together and put a demonstration of what you have to go out in payment. Then let's talk about the sales tax. A lot of people don't know what goes on with the sales tax. Where does that money go? Everybody's worrying about the sales tax money will be accounted for by the state capitol. I don't trust the California government. Somehow, everybody in this room has to know 100% of what's going on between what's, what's needs to be done, what has to be done with all that money, what happens to it, how much do we keep for the police, the fire, how much do we keep for safety. I think everybody realizes we have to learn a lot more than what everybody's learning so far. We bless you all for all your hard work. We're still friends, but do a good job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Amber Wilson, President, CEO, Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce. Tonight, I'm here to present data collected from a survey the chamber rolled out to membership and community members last Thursday after Wednesday's budget workshop, where council decided via split 3-2 vote to move forward with a cut-heavy budget without potential income from a 1% sales tax increase proposed by city staff as a possible revenue generator and way to balance the budget. The survey asked two questions, and data collected as of 3:00 p.m. this afternoon is as follows. Out of 600 responses collected, 600. Question one asks, "Are you in support of adding a 1% sales tax increase measure to the November 2019 ballot?" 454, 76% responded yes. 146, 24% responded no. Question two asked, "Check the answer that applies." 351 responders equalling 56% checked that they support a general 1% sales tax increase measure, subject to a majority vote approval. 127 responders equalling 21% checked that they support a special 1% sales tax increase, subject to a 2/3s vote approval. 143 responders equalling 24% checked that they do not support a 1% sales tax increase either way, and 14 responders equalling 2% checked that they were not sure. Survey responses will be open throughout budget discussion, and links can be found on the Lompoc Valley Chamber Facebook page, various Lompoc Record, KCOY, and KSBY articles. I believe the City of Lompoc also shared it to their social media or by contacting the chamber. I urge the community to weigh in on this important issue, and copies of this update can also be found in the back for those in the audience that would like a copy. I saw a bumper sticker the other day. It was very poignant to me and perfectly timed and placed in front of me, I think by something greater than myself. It read, "When people lead, the leaders will follow." The people are leading. The question remains, will council follow? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, and members of the council, and citizens of Lompoc. I'm actually going to speak tonight. I'm, I sit on the board of the Chamber of Commerce, so I thought I would try to share a few things that could be impacted with potential cuts that are coming. As a lot of you know, there are, on, it's on the table to have significant cuts to the chamber, and while that will not make the chamber go away, it will completely change the way that we function. We'll focus more on membership, drives towards membership, and less on those community events that we've become known for. So just for clarity, I want the citizens of Lompoc to ask their leaders questions about what they want to see in their community. So these are some of the things that are on the table for us at the chamber that we participate in. They're not necessarily moneymakers, but they're, we feel that they do a lot of good for the community, and it brings people together, and we think that's a great thing. So the things that we have to look at in 2020 that we may not be able to support as funds won't be there, things that would be affected, things like Old Town Market. That's one of the greatest things I think our towns come up with, bringing people together, bringing vendors together, local businesses, home-based businesses, kids, dogs, the whole thing. It's a great community event, pedestrian-friendly. It's a great, great opportunity to get together and feel the heartbeat of downtown. Things like Dance Lompoc, that benefits a lot of charities in town. That's kind of a, that's mostly a break-even event for the chamber, but it does support things like the theater and Shadows Fund and Rape Crisis Center, et cetera. Those things, we have to focus on profit instead of those things. Some people have mentioned the Halloween festivities or the Holly Jolly Jubilee. A lot of families have taken their kids and enjoyed those aspects of our community, enjoyed doing something great and fun and wholesome in Lompoc. Those things may not be around any longer. These are some tough decisions. We totally understand that. Another thing we have to consider is the Visitor Center. There are some other entities that work with tourism and bringing people in, but there is a steady stream of people that peel off of Highway 1 that want to know just a little bit more about Lompoc, and they go to the Lompoc Chamber of Commerce Visitor Center. So that's something that we can should be conscious of as well. And the last thing I'll mention in just supporting what the chamber's doing, it's, of course, our job is to support the business network, to support businesses, and one of our things that I'm most proud of that's happened most recently is our connecting with the adult school, and that is to understand that for us to have great businesses here, we have to have a ready workforce, a qualified workforce. So the chamber is working to get the word out, working with the adult school to help better the workforce here in Lompoc, and I think that's a noble thing. So anyway, just for education's sake, I just want the community to know what the impacts are of potential cuts to the chamber. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Osborne, and council members. This is my first time speaking in front of this council, and I'm not really good at public speaking. First of all, I'd like to thank our first responders in blue in the back. They don't need to be cut. I don't care about the 1% cut. I'm not here about money. I'm here about public safety and the residential situation going on. I live in a residence owned by Dario Peña, and without using bad words, I'm just going to say he's not a landlord, he's a slumlord. He does not respond to calls, no owner or management, no return phone calls. Every, all the maintenance that does get done is done without permits or inspections. So I also think cutting city workers, such as your code enforcement and city enforcement people, are very vital to health and safety to our children and everyone else around us. I live on a very difficult block, which is M and in-between Chestnut and Walnut and L and K right there, and it's getting to be a very rough, gang-associated neighborhood. It was not like that when I moved here five years ago. I've been a resident of Santa Barbara County for over 20 years, but Lompoc is our home. My, my daughter in the back here has went to Miguelito since pre-K, and she's graduating into sixth grade next week, and I would hate for her to have to change schools, because I had to when I was a kid, and it was not good. The rent was raised over 10%. My rent was raised $300 from 750 to 1,050 in one day without warning. We are in the process of a lawsuit with Dario Peña, and my place has been red-tagged. I don't know quite sure the law on that, but if I have to find re-accommodations, I don't think I should be paying for that. I think Dario Peña should be paying for that. It's substandard conditions to live in. I have people living in cars out in front of my apartment, gang writing on the walls, people with weapons. We have children. We need to protect our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Charles Summer. I don't think, I don't think anyone, good story, I feel for that guy. No one envies your position. You know, a lot of the citizens in this community come up, talk, give you ideas, let you know how they feel, but no one but you knows the weight of the decisions you make. Personally, I think the decision you made last week is a blessing in disguise. I think going forward with the budget that you had as divisive as it was is the best chance for this community to get a 1% sales tax. I won't say whether I support it or not, because that's not important. I feel that, at the very least, everyone should have an opportunity to say yes or no. And given the track record of our community in the last few cycles, any sort of tax, whether it's a bond or anything else, has not been seen favorably. And, and the budget that's proposed is probably the best chance you have of getting that sales tax passed, because once the community sees the cuts, understands the needs, those that say they want it but don't go out and vote are going to come out and vote. Those that don't want it are the ones that come out and vote. And given the voting age of people and the percentage of turnout, it's pretty sad. I think it was about 14,000 last time, and the more people that come out, the better. I'll be back.
Thank you.
Hello again. Charles Martinez, Vandenberg Fire and Lompoc resident. So yeah, I'll, I'll keep coming here talking as much as I need to, if I need to stick up for my, my brothers and sisters on public safety. I would have to kind of respectfully disagree. I would think we should wait to see, you know, and then come up with the sales tax. You're playing with people's lives, you're playing with people's livelihood, you're playing with the reputation of the city and how they take, how they take care of its public, how they take care of its public servants, how they work with getting a budget, just making money. Here's the thing, you know, we've been through this problem a couple years ago, a couple years before that, I mean, 2017, says, you know, we, we didn't, we didn't do the tax, decided to kind of be creative, and here we are two years later, doing it again. I mean, define, define insanity. And here you are, just want to do it again. Same song and dance, so we can just be here two, two years later and talk about the same damn things over and over and over again. The cost of business constantly goes up. That's just a fact. We talk about how much more we're spending on public safety, police, fire, libraries. Cost of business just goes up. That's, that's something you got to understand. I know you guys understand that. You guys are intelligent guys. You know that. So we got to, we got to plan for that. And if we don't have the revenues to accommodate for that, I mean, we got to, we, we gave you a suggestion of how we can make it work, and show you several cities where it has worked. You know, imagine there's the sales tax revenue that the, the AIDS ride would generate, or Flower Festival, all that money. Leave it on the table, just because why? We want to prove a point, and then come back and say, oh, let's do the sales tax? That's insane. Absolutely insane. It's disrespectful to the people whose lives you're affecting by these cuts, which affect jobs and lives and livelihoods and reputation of the city, and keeping quality people at our fire and police. It just, it's, it's just insane. Absolutely disrespectful, I think, to those people who, who choose to continue to serve the City of Lompoc and the staffers that continue to work for you guys, short men because you guys want to cut some more jobs because, because you just sit there smuggling saying, "I don't want to do a sales tax. I don't even want to try it. I don't even want to let the people vote for it." You guys got a survey even. I don't know how many more messages you want to say that the people would like to at least have that choice, the choice. If it's a no, then you can, I'll stand up here, you can wave your finger at me and say, "I told you so." But at least, give us the choice to vote. Give us that option. It is still a free country. You're supposed to represent our voice. You have people, many people, numerous people, organizations saying, "Give us a choice, give us a chance," instead of smugly saying, "No, forget about it, next." That's disrespectful to me, I think. We give you respect. You've been voted on there to represent us. People are telling you what they would like. Listen, please, listen. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, mayor, members of the public. Mayor Osborne, thank you for your proclamation today for the LGBTQ community, and I really do appreciate that. I support you as a mayor. I disagree with you on certain things, and I think that's what makes us such a great community, is that people can live amongst one another and have differing opinions on how to do things, and that's what makes us a, a great democracy. I also would like to thank you for bringing up some facts that you brought up earlier in this meeting. One of them concerning Councilman Starbuck and things that he said and what he did not want to see happen. I, I think back to last November during the elections, and we had two candidates running for reelection here, and both candidates are known for being against taxes. And the opportunity for tax discussions was prevalent in the election. The candidates that supported raising taxes were supported, Shirley Sherman and Robert Cuthbert were supported by people that were pro-tax, and they ran against Mr. Vega, and they ran against Mr. Starbuck. And Mr. Starbuck, I voted for you. You, I'm, I'm under his district, and I didn't vote for Mr. Starbuck so that he can vote to tax me more. I understand that the city is in need, and I believe that the people should have a right to vote for the, for a tax. I do not support that 1% general sales tax, however. I do support, and I would like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for bringing this statistic here, because this statistic supports, if we're, if we're looking at it and taking this, this supports that the people would, would pass a special tax that requires 2/3s votes. 58% said that they would vote for a general tax, according to this. 58.5% would vote for a 1% general sales tax. An additional 21% would vote for a special 1% sales tax. I believe that if you put a special sales tax, you got, you're looking at over 75%, which is what this data shows here on the front, 75% approval. So my understanding is that the issue before us is not an issue of not having enough revenue in our general fund. The issue is CalPERS. So why don't we just take care of that issue? Because we should have enough money to run this government. The issue is CalPERS. Let's pay off that obligation. Let's put a tax together that is special, that requires a 2/3s majority vote, which the people will support, that either goes to public safety or a combination of public public safety and paying off CalPERS. That's what the people want, along with economic development. Thank you.
Seeing no one else rise, we'll close oral communications and bring it back to the agenda. Next item on the agenda is appointments. We have appointments for the Human Service Commission and the Public Safety Commission. Human Service Commission has one term ending twelve twenty twenty, which will be Councilmember Cordova's appointment. And then there is one term ending twelve twenty twenty-two, and that will be Councilmember Starbuck's appointment. And the floor is open for nominations. Councilmember Cordova.
I would like to nominate Ms. Karen Ortiz as my commissioner for human services.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five zero. Councilmember Starbuck.
I'd like to nominate Maria Morales as my appointment on the Human Services Commission.
And I'll give you your second on that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five zero. Congratulations to both of you. The meeting in July is very important, so get on the calendar, find out when your meeting is, and please attend. Thank you so much for volunteering. Our next committee is the Public Safety Commission. We have one term ending twelve twenty-two. And the appointment is for Councilmember Starbuck. And there is one applicant, Oscar Luna. Councilmember Starbuck.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Oscar Luna for the Public Safety Commission.
Cordova?
Give him a second on that.
All right. And we have a second from Councilmember Cordova. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five zero. And congratulations to Mr. Luna. All right. Now we move on to public hearing item number seven, to consider the ordering of services and improvements, the continuation of the assessment of the fiscal year nineteen twenty for the park maintenance and city pool assessment, District number two zero zero two dash zero one, adoption of resolution number six two six zero parentheses nineteen, approving the engineer's report, confirming the diagram and assessment, and the ordering of continuation of assessment for fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty. And we have Management Service Director, Mr. Dean Albro to present.
Good evening. The Park Maintenance and City Pool Assessment District is how we pay for the pool through the bonds and we also get a little residual that helps us run it as well. It's a three-step process. In February, he came to ask for direction to have the engineer's report done. We brought the preliminary report back on May nineteenth to adopt the resolution for the intent for this evening to hold a public hearing. And that's what we're going to do tonight. And it's hard for me to see that. And adopt the, the resolution and move forward. Each year, we're allowed to increase it, and that number is white on white, sorry about that, three percent. This year, it went up three point one five. And it's, so the maximum we'll be able to do is three percent. That's based on the SFE or single-family equivalent. And that'll be twenty-eight forty-four this year. And it'll be approximately three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Doesn't really show it very well, sorry about that. If you go to the engineer's report on page nine and ten, you can see our budget for the assessment district. One of the things we're required to do is to do a general benefit requirement. The engineer report assessed that at twenty-five percent. Our budget's around six point two million. Twenty-five percent of that is one point one million. And so the city portion is four point four million approximately, so we definitely exceed it. We meet that requirement. So pretty short and sweet this evening. I asked for you to adopt the resolution, six two six zero parentheses nineteen, approve the engineer's report, confirm the diagram, and we'll move it forward to the county and put it on the tax roll.
Any questions for Mr. Albro? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and open for public comment on the item. Seeing no one rise, we will close public comment and I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Mosby.
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
And Councilmember Vega seconds that. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five zero. Item number eight is the appeal by PJ's Delicatessen of Utility Director's Ruling on Request for Reconsideration Regarding Enforcement of Lompoke Municipal Code Section thirteen point sixteen point three seven oh. Trap and scepter required at one twenty-eight West College Avenue. Councilmember Starbuck.
A direct financial involvement with this, so I'm going to recuse myself.
And Mr. Wilkie.
Mayor Osborne, council members. This is an appeal by PJ's Delicatessen of the Utility Director's Ruling of Request for Reconsideration Regarding Enforcement of Lompoke Municipal Code Section thirteen point one six point three seven zero. Trap interceptors required at the location of one twenty-eight West College Avenue. The staff recommendation is to hear the business owner's appeal of the utility director's requirement to install a grease trap interceptor and make a ruling on the appeal. So before I go further, I believe that would probably be the right thing to do to allow the appeal to be heard.
Hello, I'm Charles Summer. My mother is the owner of PJ's Deli and she's here. It's, it's interesting how this all came up. For those that weren't around, Katrina Dorsey is the wastewater technician, is that correct? Technician? She's a technician? Katrina? Pre-treatment, okay. She sent a survey late November to certain restaurants, which I assume did not have on file a permit for the installation of a grease trap. There was twenty-eight businesses. I saw one positive out of that as Jack in the Box, which is on the same square block that PJ's Deli, did not have a grease interceptor. It's amazing to think that, how long has Jack in the Box been there? I mean, I feel as long as PJ's has been there, we just celebrated thirty-seven years, so it's a lot of grease. She mentioned in a presentation the following week, now granted, sorry getting into myself, survey, I believe that the survey was to ask if there was essentially a grease interceptor. There was a lot of questions on there. I chose not to fill it out and turn it back in. I felt as though regardless of what anybody answered on that survey, she was going to require that business to get a grease interceptor. And there's other businesses owners here that dealt with that. Then it was a letter going out to all the businesses threatening fines that there was no policy on. In fact, I believe it was the Thursday or Friday prior to December fourth city council meeting that she sent out letters to threaten fines to those who don't have a grease interceptor. And then post sending out that letter came in front of you bypassing Utility Commission and said, hey, city council, can I do this? Which she had already done. So that didn't look good on her or wastewater. In that presentation, she mentioned that there was a, you know, Rome failed because of a failing sewer structure. She went on to talk about the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Board permit and how much, there was a threshold of how much wastewater can go in through the system. I believe its total solvents, the city's permitted to eleven hundred milligrams per liter. And the city was at nine hundred ninety-seven, which is ninety point six percent. We're at seventy-five percent capacity chloride, seventy-six percent sodium. This is all part of her presentation on that given day. Granted, those proposed fines were twenty-five hundred dollars for the first violation, ten thousand dollars for the second violation, and twenty-five thousand dollars for the third violation, which is excessive. And I know the state has come back and said that excessive fines are actually against the law. So I don't think they can do that, the city can do that at this point anyway. She said sodium was coming from possible water softeners. I think specifically there's a dialysis center that's using water softeners and I think the city's dealing with that. But, you know, the countless amount of residents in this town that have water softeners, not legally, but they still do. I mean, people install water heaters without getting a permit. I don't think intentionally because they are trying to circumvent getting a permit, getting inspected. I think it's more negligence and not understanding the law. So she also mentioned that through these fines, that she was going to try, try to build a wastewater fund, which, and the city attorney, if one of you want to ask him, I believe is against the law. You can't use fines as a way, as a fundraiser, just as though parking violations and traffic violations don't go directly back to city Lompoke Police Department. So with these fines, she was trying to guide people into compliance. I've had many other testimonies from other businesses where Mrs. Dorsey or Ms. Dorsey, along with another city employee, have gone into businesses without identifying themselves, doing what I feel is a violation of Fourth Amendment rights and doing a, an illegal inspection without identifying yourself or, or getting permission to go in there. And I know that Mayor Osborne received a letter from one of those employees and replied in kind about a mandate from the EPA, which I disagree with. I don't believe it's an EPA mandate. I was told that the Water Board made a recommendation to wastewater to look into food service establishments, not to mandate that every food service establishment have a grease trap. Now, I'd like to turn it over to a family friend of ours who helped us do some research on the matter. He has some packets for the council members and possibly our city clerk to submit to the record. So I'm going to turn over some time over to John Lynn. Thank you.
Actually, there'd be an extra because Dirk can't have one. Okay, so my, my function here is just to provide the technical side of this rather than a little broader stroke. So the first, and there's a set of attachments, but before we get to those, I want to quote the California Plumbing Code. Section one zero one four point one states that a grease interceptor and trap is used anonymously is required in establishments where food is prepared or other establishments where grease is introduced in the drainage and sewer system in quantities that can affect the line stoppage or hinder sewage treatment. Section of the Lompoke Municipal Code thirteen point one six point three seven oh, traps and interceptors to capture grease, oil, hair, and sand shall be provided when in the opinion of the director, they are necessary for protection of the wastewater system from liquid waste containing excessive amounts of grease. Keyword excessive. So how did we come down this road? Attachment number one, which I call your attention to, and the pages are out of order because I put the page that most applies at the front, from the city of Lompoke dated January fourth, twenty nineteen, and PJ's Deli was redacted because I had used that letter previously. The first paragraph on the second page states, "The city staff observed a lateral that had no interceptor or grease trap. I asked to be sure what a lateral was and I was advised I was correct. It was a sink, in this case, a three-compartment sink for washing dishes." So the city staff observed that there was a three-compartment sink for washing dishes, which in fact does not have a grease interceptor. There was no effort on the part of the city staff to determine, number one, if under state law, the, there was line blockage. Number two, there was no attempt to determine under state law that there was a threat to the water treatment plant. And number three, there was no attempt to determine if there were excessive amounts of grease or fats going down the drain. So the only finding was that they had a sink. Now, just for fun, at the very end, I attached a definition of what excessive is. The deli does not have a deep fryer. The deli does not have a grill. And those are the two things in the restaurant industry, and I've sold a lot of restaurant equipment that create fat and oil going down the drain. And so the, this facility does not have the two things that cause those quote excessive amounts of grease and oil. What they do occasionally do is wash a mayonnaise spoon and that produces some. There are two other businesses in town that I am familiar with, and I think one of them will speak to you this evening, that have put a trap in that are similar to PJ's Deli. And what they have found is that these traps do not collect any grease. And the way these work is they're a two-chamber trap and they float off the grease in the first chamber and it becomes a hard cake. And then that hard cake in effect gives you an air seal in that chamber so that the fermenting food down below isn't gassing off into your restaurant. If there is no grease and there is no hard cake formed by the cooling grease, then these things gas off. And the other two businesses in town and businesses I have known in the past that had one of these where they didn't have any grease, you have to clean them generally every week to ten days. Because if they don't have grease, they can't work right. So there have also been some testimony by staff regarding permit thresholds and exceeding thresholds with regard to the ND-PES permit. I call your attention to attachment number three error two, which is taken out of the ND-PES report. I have the full document over there if anyone wishes to see it, but I lifted the page with oil and grease. And this is the most recent filing by the city. So the permitted limit, as you can see, is five milligrams per liter. And the yearly average, which is what these plants are gauged on, is three milligrams per liter, just slightly over fifty percent of the permitted amount. Now you will notice that in one month, April, it was above that. However, plants are gauged on the running average. Attachment number three shows you what the running average is supposed to be. Again, this is out of the permit. But on the right-hand side, you will also notice that there's a maximum daily average, a maximum daily reading of ten, ten milligrams per liter. And so the plant, even though it had one day that was above the permitted limit, that does not affect the plant's permit because they're allowed to have a day that's up to This seems to have been an effort, what I would consider a shotgun approach. If you look at attachment number four, which is the third quarter pre-treatment report from the city of Lompoke with regard to enforcement actions, you can see the list of all of the places that received an enforcement action with regard to fat soils and grease, which is called FOG on here, but that's what it stands for. I have visited a number of these businesses who have put the trap in and they're not catching any grease, but they spent a lot of money. So we've gone on- So we've gone off in a direction where we assume that because someone had a three-compartment sink, they needed a grease interceptor. And the reality is that PJ's Deli does not produce any grease. The city has never proved that it did, and I hope you will rule in favor of their appeal. Charles?
Okay. I'm going to go through a little bit more of that story. So when we got that initial letter, nowhere in there was there a part of the code where you could appeal. So all the twenty-eight businesses that were given the letter, threatened fines, didn't realize there was an appeal process, shotgunned, called the plumber, got, you know, tried to do what they would to not get these fines. And again, you know, I knew better. I talked to the right people. And Mr. Wilkie had mentioned that in a subsequent meeting, that, quote, "We could have done better. The notice doesn't necessarily need to include that." Now, it's interesting that he says that, and then, once I gave an appeal, I received the response from city staff, and then time went by, and time went by, and then I got another letter from Terry Schwab, the paralegal. And I thought it was weird, because the letter didn't say that my appeal was denied. It was just, hey, cited the code, here you go. And so I called her, and I said, Terry, this is interesting. This doesn't, nowhere in this says it denies my appeal. She says, no, we're starting over. So, to my surprise, I'm like, wait, I've been waiting sixty days for a denial. I assumed I was going to be denied, because of the conversations I had, and the temperature in the room. If it didn't necessarily need to include that, which that letter from Terry Schwab did include the appeal process, why did it start over again? Why did I have to go through the appeals process twice for the same item, if it didn't need to include that, which is very, very frustrating? And in the report, it said that no lateral was seen, which is not true, because no representative from the city even came into our kitchen area. Do you want to talk about it? You want to come up here? So I got a report from my mother, that she was essentially accosted by a staff member. She'll talk to you about it. It happened the day when she came in.
She came in and said that I have to do what they are asking to do. And I didn't want to sign any papers. She sent me letters. Even with the mail, I have to sign up, and I didn't sign up. I sent it back, because I knew, I explained it to her, that I didn't have any grease. I even, the place that I warm up, I clean it up before I wash it. I have more grease in my house than I have at the deli. So I was really hoping that I get the help from the city, because it's nonsense to have to have that at the deli.
So when I talked to my mother about it, she said that Katrina Dorsey came in and talked to her, never came behind the counter, never saw any apparatus or lack thereof in our business. So that's, you know, where it says that, that really isn't true. They didn't observe anything, because they didn't really ask to go back there. We've been there for thirty-seven years, and we've had zero line stoppage. If you know the deli, our menu is kind of the same from when we started. Nothing has changed in thirty-seven years. And I'd like to think that that consistency is why the community supports us so much, because when you go to the deli, it's, choose the same, including my mother. Where'd she go? And two businesses that I talked to, one is One Room. John Freyas tried to come, he's not here. John's not here? No. He went through a battle with the city. They, you know, as a new construction, they wanted him to put a grease trap in there, and he didn't understand why. They weren't cooking anything, they weren't, they have a deep fryer, they weren't making burgers, they have a grill. But the city made him do it, anyway. And I've been in there a few times, and he said that, just as John Lynn said, if there's not enough grease to come in and solidify, it gases off and it makes, it stinks. So it's a constant, constant cleaning, constant battle, dealing with the grease trap, opening it up, scooping out the bits of food that make it down there. And it's just not necessary. And I think that, you know, the city should look at the state code, which is, the city code is based off of, and do a better job with that. And I don't mean to be really negative here, I like Mr. Wilkie. But he's an accountant. I don't know how he got the job as utility director. And it's hard for me to take his discretion, when he has a bachelor's in business administration with an emphasis in accounting, has, his whole career has been in finance, and all of a sudden, he's the utility director, which via the city job description and the education experience portion, is bachelor's degree in engineering, natural science, environmental science, or related field. And, great, he got a job, I'm sure he got a raise, but how does someone without one of those degrees, how is he in charge of our plumbing and our electricity? He served as the, I think Dean Albro's now in his position. Great, you know, he's, you know, I've heard him speak many times, and, you know, he's very even. But on a personal level, we've always gotten along. But it doesn't make sense that a gentleman that has a background in finance is making the decision on a plumbing issue. I've talked to so many plumbers in this town, and I asked them, do you think, knowing our business, do we need a grease trap? No. It's laughable. They laugh when they say no. It's a laughable idea that PJ's Deli, that Southside Coffee Shop, that One Room, that the Vitamin and Herb Store, the Vitamin and Herb Store. Katrina Dorsey went into the Vitamin and Herb Store to tell the owner she needs a grease trap, because she makes some smoothies, some health drinks, and she has a three-compartment sink. She needs a grease trap. At the end of the day, I think what's most important, that if the utility director or Katrina Dorsey, if they want to require PJ's Deli to have a grease trap, there needs to be some facts behind that. Where have they seen that whatever's going down our drains is blocking the line? There's no line stoppage. Thirty-seven years. Almost everybody, every residential home, ask them if they've had line stoppages in thirty-seven years, they're probably going to say yes. There's like a hair going down the drain. One of the kids put a toy down the drain. I mean, it's absurd to think that after thirty-seven years of no line stoppage, and almost zero change in our menu, that the city wants us to have a grease trap. So I don't know what more I can say to convince you that there's no reason for PJ's Deli, or Southside, or the Vitamin Herb Store, or a handful of the other businesses that don't have, we don't, oh, PJ's Deli does not have a gas line to the building. So even if we wanted to put a fryer, even if we wanted to put a grill, that would take a tremendous amount of infrastructure change. We use a convection oven, restaurant-grade microwave, and we have a grill in the back that captures grease. Thank you.
The grill in the back is outside.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. And the other thing I failed to mention, is on this list is Baskin Robbins ice cream. And when they received their notice, they inquired of the franchise if any other Baskin Robbins in California had been required to put in a grease trap. And the answer from the Baskin Robbins franchise department was, there is no other Baskin Robbins franchise in California that's been required to put in a grease trap. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant, before we return it back to city staff? Okay.
So I'll go briefly through the staff report that was provided in the package. The background, the Lompoc Municipal Code, section thirteen sixteen three seven zero, requires grease interceptors to capture grease from restaurants such as PJ's Delis, as deemed necessary by the utility director. It identifies three reasons in there, out of the code, and then it's, hold it. It, how do I say this? Because of the city's National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit issued by the Regional Water Quality Control Board, all food establishments in the city must install a grease trap or interceptor. And I have followed this to reduce the risk that the city would receive fines from the Water Quality Board in the future for not abiding by the permit. How risky that is, I can't tell you, but it would be more of a risk to allow one or more entities to not have a grease trap that needs a grease trap than if you require everybody to have a grease trap that is a food-serving establishment. The fine, the potential fine that could be imposed on the city, is up to six thousand dollars per occurrence, per day. What the city has done in its code has provided for, as mentioned, under-sink interceptors instead of grease traps that are in the main line of the lateral. So that accommodation is not something that is explicitly provided for in the permit or in the EPA regulations, but it is something that we're allowed discretion to do, so we're able to make it less costly for those smaller establishments to put in those undersink units, rather than a outside, in-ground unit. In comparison with other cities within the Central Coast, under the jurisdiction of this Regional Water Quality Board, all establishments, regardless of size, are required to have grease traps or interceptors. I think last time, it was asked about business-friendly alternatives, so providing the less costly unit is a business-friendly approach that saves the businesses thousands of dollars throughout the community. Following the recommendations of the Water Board during 2018, the wastewater division staff canvassed the city's food service establishments and requested each to complete a survey. This was done on the recommendation of the Water Board, to establish the wastewater characteristics of each of the establishments, and by returning the completed form to the wastewater division. The purpose of the survey was to identify the opportunities to improve the wastewater system and treatment plant operations, and to determine users who needed either a discharge permit and/or trapped interceptors in compliance with the city's N P D S permit. As a result of the survey, it was determined PJ's Delicatessen, located at one twenty-eight West College Avenue, had neither in-ground interceptor nor undersink grease trap. PJ's Deli was provided information regarding the required installation of the undersink grease trap. As with other food service establishments requiring either an in-ground interceptor or undersink trap, wastewater division staff was ready and willing to provide guidance regarding the installation process to help the establishment minimize installation and operational costs. Several food establishments worked with wastewater division staff in installing process, and had provided positive feedback to the utility director regarding the friendly nature of the staff interactions and the professional approaches to the process. I physically visited some of these establishments, and they were very happy to show me what they had installed, and what the interaction was with the wastewater staff, and it was positive. After several attempts to gain compliance with PJ's Delicatessen to install a interceptor or grease trap, a notice of violation was issued on January fourth, 2019, requiring PJ's to install a grease trap. That's attachment number one. PJ's requested a reconsideration via email on March twenty-fourth. That's attachment two. On April twelfth, a ruling under the request for reconsideration was sent to PJ's. That's attachment three. And on April twelfth, 2019, PJ's appeal to the city council was received by email. Attachment four. The hearing was duly noted on PJ's, to PJ's, on April twenty-sixth and twenty-ninth, which is attachment number five. A ruling other than to uphold the clear requirements of Lompoc Municipal Code, section thirteen sixteen three seventy, would expose the city to the increased risk of possible costs, unknown but potentially significant long-term liabilities, and would set a precedent for other small food service establishments who also refuse to install the required traps or interceptors. The most business-friendly approach is to apply the Lompoc Municipal Code requirements equally to all businesses. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Councilmember Vega?
Mr. Wilkie, you know, under the business-friendly concept that I once addressed staff to identify what business-friendly meant, whether it was a concept, or is it a reality, or just something that we say here in the city? It sounds like the discretion of the director is on you, and you've made a judgment call. Okay, so I understand, and I respect that. But I think that the path of least resistance sometimes has been taken too much by the city here. We've always gone to the most stringent rulings, whether it's valid or not, and setting the precedence, I don't agree with you saying that we're setting a precedence here, when we have the appeal process, which would allow anybody in any business to come over here and submit an appeal, and appeal to council. So I think that wouldn't be setting a precedence. What you're doing is, it seems like anyone that's involved here would be able to come over here and appeal to council. So I think that's their prerogative, and they're utilizing this path to hopefully get a different resolution here. I see with everything here that we have, it's like, without even a gas line, I mean, that's pretty strict. I think most of the businesses here that are marginal, it's not about saying the right or wrong of it, it's sometimes it's just a judgment call, in my eyes. Setting a precedent doesn't even apply here. I think the fact that we want to go ahead, and we have somebody here in code enforcement, hey, I applaud them, they're trying to do their job. But I said, when it comes to the director, the discretion of the director, that's why we're here. I think that, I think that we should hear it, and we should listen to these unique businesses that may not fall within the confines of making them spend money when they're barely making it, especially if there's no risk. So again, the appeal process and setting a precedence, I don't think it applies, especially when we always have the appeal process to our business owners that they can utilize.
So if I may, one thing you said in there is no risk. So one of the things that we have in the N P D S permit is the obligation to meet our permit requirements. If we don't do that- do that, the Water Board has the ability, it may not impose it, but it has the ability to impose fines for not, in their minds, not following our permit. So I fully agree with you that it's a judgment call. I don't think it's in my... How do I say this? I don't think it's up to me to make a judgment call that could put the city at risk of getting a fine and potentially days and days and days and days of fines. So as the governing board of the city who makes policy decisions, I think you're absolutely right that that appeal process that is in place provides for the city council to make a policy decision to either allow the appeal or deny the appeal. I don't think it's my place to go in there and make that policy decision on your behalf. And the other side of that is if I do make that policy decision by saying, let's make this criteria about who not to enforce this upon, and the city does get fined, then I would presume that the then council or the current council, whenever that fine comes in, would look to me and say, why'd you do that? You didn't even let us have the ability to make the policy decision by the policymakers. And that's primarily the reason why we're here tonight, is I fully agree with the appeal process. I think the policy decision to allow a variance from our existing permit is in the purview of the city council rather than under my jurisdiction where I could undermine something that would be detrimental to the city.
And I fully respect your position and the code enforcement person, but again, I don't want to water down the appeal process because it's their right. And even though in self-defense, you guys have presented your case, precluded the ordinance and the reasons why, again, I'd like to hear them. It's kind of like a fair representation of why they're here and we need to listen. So you're right, it needs to come to the council, and I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
And our pretreatment operator mentioned to me that she has a couple of other items that she'd like to add to the record, if this is a...
Why don't we let the rest of the questions and then we'll let her add to that. Councilmember...
Mayor, sorry to interrupt, but I do want to remind the council this is a public hearing item tonight, so questions are fine at this time to staff, but before we express any opinions, we do need to take public comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosby, questions for staff?
Mr. Wilkie, excuse me. Mr. Wilkie, are you aware of any liquid waste containing excessive amount of grease at PJ's Deli?
So I believe the comment was made that they just have a teaspoon of mayonnaise a day. So I calculated on 20 years and not the 37 years that Mr. Sumner said they're in business, but one teaspoon over 20 years is approximately seven liters of mayonnaise.
Okay, so are you aware of anything actively happening at PJ's Deli with that, other than a mathematical equation?
So it was...
Line blockages or stoppages? Are you aware of any of that from this facility?
Well, that's interesting because one of the other tenants on this property is a car wash, and the car wash utilizes the same lateral. And that car wash has detergents and the like items that go down that lateral. So that detergent could very easily dilute the materials that's going down from the property under the appeal right now, which would effectively make that line clear, but it would present itself somewhere down further down the line once that material starts to collapse. So...
Is that a no?
So with that additional business on the property, there's no way to tell.
So is that a yes or a no?
It's undetermined.
So have you ever seen one? Have you seen...
I have not inspected it myself.
Have you heard of a blockage caused by PJ's Deli?
I can't answer that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Codova?
I respect the fact that you wanted to have it come to the appeal process or, you know, you didn't want to make the decision. The only issue that I have with that is that the code, the Lompoc Municipal Code, which is cited 13.16.370, states that, in the opinion of the director, and when there is an excessive amount of grease that is considered to be. So I feel that you should be able to make that determination for a particular business or for particular businesses where the excess or where there is no excessive amounts of grease being produced. And I guess the excessive component would come in with the knowledge of the wastewater plant and understanding what the codes and requirements are. I also do think that maybe perhaps we... Well, let me ask you this. Did, when was the last time that the city was fined, or how often is the city fined with this particular fee?
To my knowledge, we have not been.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to clarify one thing. It's not that I did not desire to make a decision. I made a decision that I thought was prudent to protect the city's general fund from having to pay fines in the future. Just the fact that we've not been fined in the past doesn't say that in the future the Water Board becomes more stringent. The understanding is that we have a five-year permit. We have, the MPDES permit is a five-year permit and it goes every five years. There's nothing in the current permit that prohibits the new permit to have restrictions on activity that goes on with the wastewater treatment plant that is not in the current permit. They can make the rules more stringent.
And that's why I do appreciate your approach, but maybe then the city should consider changing the municipal code so that it doesn't require the director's opinion and then it just comes to council.
So for my understanding, this was something we were supposed to have implemented years ago, but because we didn't have the personnel to oversee it, it hadn't been done. We were up for potential review and notified that we might fail that review if we hadn't implemented something that was supposed to be part of this agreement with the Water Board. And last but not least, it was proactive and business-friendly to send the notice to everyone and be treated equally the same because the simple statement is food business, food service. So it is a bit of trust that we have that individuals are saying they've never had a line backup, because we don't ask for proof of that. It's difficult at the other end of the wastewater treatment plant to see who has created that backup because we don't put dye in the lines and color code our grease as it's going out from different locations or have some sort of signature to tell that it's that location unless it's very large impact and there's something very defining about the grease being used. So ultimately, you made the decision based on the policy that's on the books and is hesitant towards creating an issue by the recommendation to deny the appeal and then have it come to council. So it's just sort of following a path of doing what the best is to protect the city based on all the rules in place because that is what you are hired to do, is protect our water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, I'm sorry, and the city sewer lines. That's my best interpretation of all of that.
And I was kind of going over the staff report in fairly briefly, but it did mention in there that we had recommendations from the state Water Board in, I believe, late 2018 that said they wanted us to address this. So this is the way that was addressed. So it wasn't something that we just implemented or started that process. It was something that was because of the Water Board recommendation.
Before we go back through the next round of council questions, allow Ms. Dorsey to contribute to the information you wanted to present.
Hello, council and mayor. My name's Katrina Dorsey. I am the technician that's been so famous in this chat. I just wanted to clear a few things up. I did give those surveys to every single food establishment place in town, not just ones that I thought may not have them. And so from there, what I did is everyone who didn't have it on their survey, I went over and I talked to them and I let them know that this is something that's going to be coming down the pipes and I wanted to give them a heads up. And then from there, everybody who either wouldn't get back to me or so that they wouldn't be doing that, I sent out the warning notice. And then from there, anybody who didn't get back to that, they got a notice of violation. Now, there are some other things. The presentation that I did in December was not on grease traps. That was on fines for noncompliance. And if you refer back to that video, I was never talking about fining people, what was it, $2,500 for their first offense and something for their second and $25,000 for their third? That was never in there. And it did talk about salts, but it didn't have anything to do with grease traps. So I wanted to clear that up. And then also, the layer of fat on the top of the grease traps, the grease itself, does not keep all of the gases inside. That actually contributes to the H2S that takes or that comes out of the grease trap. So that's not essentially how a grease trap works. But it does catch the solids and it catches the fats, and that's what we're trying to keep out of the system, is the H2S will eat up the pipes and cause sewer problems. And that means you're going to have to be repairing your lateral. Or if there's an employee down there who opens up a manhole and there's a lot of H2S, it can cause damage. So it's really a part of safety as well as preserving our infrastructure. And we, I have a pretreatment board that I get to correspond with all over the country. And I put the question out to everybody who requires little sandwich places that do cold cuts and barbecue sandwiches to have grease traps and are there grease or is there grease in those traps? And I have gotten responses and pictures, a lot of Subway, where there is quite a bit of grease in those traps and they are having to clean it regularly. And so I can see how it would appear that there would be no grease in the trap, because it is a cold cut sandwich and, you know, it is paper wrapped and it is taken out. But there are grease on the utensils used to cook and prepare things. And from my understanding, PJ's is not just preparing food for their one restaurant, they're also preparing food for another restaurant in the village. So we have to take into effect that it's not just one little place, it's expanding and it's doubling the load.
Thank you for that contribution. Of the notices that went out, how has been the response of those who initially resisted? Do you have the numbers at least of who is actually conforming and, you know, how many you're still working with?
I have percents, yes.
Okay.
So so far, people who are in noncompliance, it is a little less than 4%. And in compliance currently is 88 point something. And working on compliance is, what would that be, like the rest?
Okay.
So far, it's been well-received. And a lot of the businesses that I have since visited to do my grease trap inspections have been quite surprised that the grease that they have in their traps, restaurants or smaller places that have told me, well, we have no grease, I don't need to put this in, but they do put it in. Like, I would have never guessed, did that come out of my sink? Yeah, it did. And they're very surprised. And like, it makes sense to them now. So I understand from the business standpoint, you know, they're just trying to make ends meet. And restaurants, I know, are hard business to be into, but we all have to comply with the city laws in order to keep our city functioning well. They're there for a reason and it's not fun having to do it. And I feel for them, but it's just something we have to do. And I think they'd be surprised by the amount of grease that they find.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Vega?
You know, I have to disagree with this process that allows an impartial hearing to anyone that comes up here on an appeal basis. Each individual businesses has the right or any individual to come up here and expect a fair and impartial appeal process. The staff has clearly stated their position and with all due respect, but I feel that us as council people and the mayor, I think that we're being disrespectful by almost acting like we're a defense attorney here, substantiating what the staff has just already stated. I think it's not fair to the applicant. I think that we need to sit back as elected officials and sit back and let the process work for itself, instead of trying to reinterpret what Mr. Wilkie said or the wastewater said. I think people are expecting us to be a little bit more adult about it instead of being biased and already trying to sell the other side.
Councilmember Mosby?
Did you have a copy of the recommendation made by the Water Board in 2018? Did you apply that with our, I don't see it in the staff report. You refer back to that a couple of times, that there was recommendations about restaurants?
I have not seen that.
Thank you. Any more questions for staff before we open it for public comment? Seeing none, we'll open the floor for public comment. Three minutes is your window.
Small business is the backbone of the economy in the United States and certainly in Lompoc. How you treat businesses sends a very powerful message, not just locally, but outward from Lompoc. The city is having budget problems. Revenue, revenue comes from businesses. Either you drive them out or you have a business-friendly environment. As far as worrying about retaliation from the state, that's not any way to run a city, especially when you have a place like Sacramento who passed propositions 47, 57, and 109 that actually puts citizens in danger. So I don't think we should run our city out of fear of what Sacramento might do. They might do anything. We elected you to represent the city and our businesses and particularly small businesses. Small businesses are real important. They are more difficult for government to control. Government controls large businesses a lot easier. Small business is very important to us. I commend the business owner for having the guts to appeal what happened to them. And that letter certainly should have mentioned that there was an appeal process instead of just trying to strong-arm them with the threat of huge fines to a small business. That's just tyranny. That's just trying to control people or drive small businesses away. The way to increase revenue is not to keep going back for more taxes, but to increase businesses and bring more people in. I hope you support the appeal of this business that has faithfully served Lompoc for decades with no issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Keith Fieker. I'm a resident of Lompoc. I'm also 37 years old. I found it kind of interesting to find out that I am actually the same age as PJ's Deli. The thing is, though, is as a resident here, I know most, my wife's concerned, that, you know, most people suffer from heart disease, 46% of us. And I can't go and think, well, you know, I seem fit, I seem healthy, but I run a basically a coin flips chance if I'm going to kill... a coin flips chance if I'm going to kill over dead or be hospitalized in my future. So just because nothing has happened yet doesn't mean that it can happen. So when I hear the utility director talk about the concerns of what could happen in future threats, doesn't mean that I can sit there and say, well, I'm never going to have a heart attack, I'm going to live forever. No one in this room can say that they're going to, without a doubt, not have any kind of heart disease issues for the rest of their life. It's just not going to happen. Our infrastructure is the same way. If you don't maintain it and take care of it, it needs to be replaced. And that's extremely costly to the taxpayer to have, to be dug up, re-tranched, and replaced, just however you cut it. So I hope that having something that was originally written by people before us in the before times, saying that there's something in here and it needs to be applied to everyone and they had their reasons for it, that we can look back and say, hey, yeah, our arteries aren't going to last forever and we need to take care of them. So here's to healthy eating and to healthy laterals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, your staff. Most of you do know me. My name is Don Ramirez. I'm with the Sons of America Legion here locally at the President Memorial Building. And I've been patronizing this lady's stand for way before she even came there, when it was a Red Rooster. And when I was a kid, I've been here 50 something years. And I really can't see this happening, the way it's happening. I think you should take her appeal into consideration and just give her the appeal and give her the approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor, Councilmembers. Stacy Lothorp, owner of Southside Coffee Company. And I want to thank you for being a Lorax and speaking for the trees. Had the process not been quite so, I complied because the process was quite scary and actually quite threatening. I didn't understand what was happening after 25 years of business. And so of course I complied. And a couple times, once, apparently it crossed in the mail, it didn't get to the desk of Katrina, I'm sorry, I can't remember your last name, where I would approach it professionally. And so she approached me again, but I felt like it was a little bit of an attack. And so of course I hurriedly got together almost $900 to put the grease trap in. And what I'm asking of this, what I wish had happened is that I had been talked to respectively, the way I truly try to run my business and talk to the community. I really try to give back to the community. That's really what we're all about at Southside, really. And so I wish that that would have happened. And then the other thing says is just to explain the point in which they were coming from. Is there a test out there? Is there an acid test? Is there, you know, this, that, I mean, when my health inspector comes in, we do, we do acid tests for my water, we do everything. Why this didn't, wasn't approached by them and their, their context of that I was a threat to this? I don't even have a kitchen. I have a soup pot. And I, I do a, I bought a wet dry vac and I line it and I get my grease trap and I clean it every, you know, and I wipe it all out. And to be honest with you, there's more stuff than, you know, let's start doing things like, if you own a two-story house, everybody has to have an elevator. Every child under the age of eight has to be in a car seat. I mean, that's what we're kind of looking at here. And so if it could just be rewritten, and I appreciate that, the fact that someone had the, had the courage to, to fight this and to, and to, to stand up for those of us who, and I'm not the only one with this. I've talked to my bakery, I've talked to several other people who don't understand it and we just did it, we just complied. I've been cleaning out the grease trap or the interceptor now for five months now. And it's, it's not a problem, it's a pain in the neck. I've got traps, two traps. I have a floor sink and I have a food waste that goes out. So the only thing I'm cleaning out is dirty water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resident Brandon Bridge, a lot of the people here are referring to each other by first names and I think that's because we're still somewhat small community. We do have obligations, state code, water, all of that. So it's important to balance those. But what I've seen over the last couple of weeks is maybe a tone, a culture, a condition that we, you ladies and gentlemen, are faced with right now, which is we've got a dentist, we've got a bakery, we've got a coffee shop, we've got a deli. And they're all just kind of screaming, hey, I don't think this is fair. So while this is just one deli and Angela's incredible, I think anybody who knows her, anybody who's been close to her house knows how well she keeps a place. But you guys are dealing with ladies and, and people about in tears over how they're being treated by their city staff. And it's not a business-friendly thing, it's a, it's a community-friendly thing. And I, I think the community's starting to go, we just don't feel like we're cared for. And so, yes, sometimes people are digging their heels in on the tax and they're saying, no more raises, no more budget, no more this and that. It's because we're at a breaking point. And so you guys will have a simple appeal here, we really will, it'll probably be, hey, put it in the grease trap, let's move on. But you guys are really setting a stake in the ground as to how we treat our community versus how we are promoting that treatment from our staff. And every single person here would love a new cop, a new librarian, a new wastewater treatment facility. And I think if we can get to that place, we can actually have real conversations. But we have this do this, do that, do this, do this. And we get beat up in the process. And this will not be your last appeal. You'll get more. And if we continue down the path we're on, it's an unfriendly process for everybody. It's, it's a waste of time. And certainly, if we step back and go to the how things were written, there's a line in every single one of our codes, every single one of our zoning documents, it says the discretion is up to the director. And that's because the people sat up there and said, come on, please, just go work with your community. They pay your wages, they pay the tax, they generate the revenue. All right, we should be a safeguard. We are putting this in place because it's not a policy of no, it's figure out a policy of yes. That, policies are noer for Comcast and companies that we hate dealing with. It's not for the person you have to go through and go, hey, I want to make your sandwich, can you please help me get over this challenge I have? But rest, make no mistake, this is a pivot point in your guys' decision process for where we go as a community.
Thank you.
Mayor, councilmembers. As I was sitting over there, I just remembered that I'm also 37 years old. You know, I freak, I remember frequenting PJ's Deli in high school. It's, it's, it was a safe space for us there. We knew we could go there and we'd have someone that cared about us and gave us good food. And they have been a part of this community for many, many years. And I am a proponent for small businesses and using the term business-friendly, which seems to be controversial here. There was a staff member that came onboard not too long ago that came here and declared that there was a new sheriff in town. And I kind of get the feeling that sometimes people come here and they want to leave a mark or a stamp that there's a new person in charge and there's a new policy and there's a new way of doing business and you need to respect it because I'm in that position. And I think that's the wrong way to go about things. We talk about business-friendly and I can name a number of instances where it's the opposite of business-friendly, or at least the perception is the opposite of that. We do, on the other hand, need to have rules and we need to have regulations. And I, of all known people, know what regulations are about because I promote an industry that has to go through very stringent restrictions and regulations. PJ's Deli should not have to go through that. They make sandwiches, they have a microwave. But there, there needs to be some kind of compromise. The staff members have to be able to do their job and they have to be able to know that when they're going by the, the rules and the law, that certain things go about in certain ways, policies and procedures. So I, I can understand how a staff member can come to such a conclusion. But as the former speaker who spoke before me said, that people in, in positions, in elected positions who make policy, made these decisions that give these special instances an opportunity to be judged differently. That's why those asterisks are there and those things that allow for a director to make a decision. I think that you may be relying a little too heavy on the letter of the law and not enough about common sense in this. And perhaps maybe you need to rewrite that, readdress it so that situations like this don't happen. But I, I would encourage you to grant the summer's appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Mosby.
I wasn't presented with any findings of fact that showed there was a need for the interceptor, an ASPER code 1316370. It says such traps or interceptors may be required for discharges from service stations, restaurants, automobiles, repair garages, et cetera. But I think the key point is it says may be required. And I mean, I don't know if you guys heard anything, there was a statement made about the Water Board, but that documentation wasn't provided to us. But again, I don't see any finding of fact that would deny the appeal for this PJ's Deli. I think we, we need to support what, what they're asking here.
So I will correct you in that there was a link included in the staff report to the report from the Water Board. And if you click on it, then all of the 117 pages are there as to what the Water Board expects from us. So it was given to us, it is a link within the staff report. Councilmember Cordova.
I think that the city really does not have proof that what entities are creating or could potentially be creating an impact to the main lines. I think if we had that information, then we wouldn't be in this position to begin with. I do understand the recommendation that was made by the Water Board. However, I do think that we took a blanket approach on it. And, and I think that we could have perhaps done it in a manner where if we understood the code to, to, to really mean excessive amounts of grease, we could have started by, by looking at the businesses that could potentially be creating that excessive amount of grease, like, you know, places that have fryers or, or grills or stuff like that. So it is my opinion also that the, that the code is meant and is written in a way where it can be discretionary to the director and/or the city staff. And it can be in a way where it's, it's, it's more, I don't even want to keep saying business-friendly, but where it's just, you know, good for the business community and, and a better recommendation could have been made.
Councilmember Vega.
Respecting wastewater and understanding what their job is, I understand they're protecting infrastructure and they have rules and guidelines. What I, what, what bothers me is when we have a discretionary item in the code where someone won't use their discretion because maybe the most stringent set of guidelines is the path to least resistance for them. Okay, so risk management wise, hey, we can always support the most stringent rules. We don't have to worry about it, we're going to walk off, we're not going to feel anything, we're just going to do our job and that's that. I think that being the business-friendly community, we talked about economic development, we talked about inviting businesses and small businesses here. I also am a small business owner, but I also had a couple of restaurants. I understand the grease trap part of it and what we're trying to do to preserve the pipes and the infrastructure in the laterals. But on the other end, when you have someone that has been in business this long, at this length of time, and they've given us all the information they need to show that there's minimal amounts, if any, going down the drain to even substantiate the fact that they, they're putting grease down the, the lines without even a gas line there for them not even to have some sort of a grill inside and a cooking facility. You know what? I applaud you guys for coming and using the appeal process. I think this is what it's set up to be. It's a democratic, democratic way of saying, hey, come to my council, we want to be part of the community, we're adding to the community. If the ordinance says we need to do this, this is why we think that we shouldn't have to. So when the, the utility director says, hey, we have this discretionary part of the ordinance and they don't want to utilize it, that's what the appeal process is for. It's not about anyone not doing their job, it's just a matter of this is your right. So I'd like to sustain their appeal and, and say I'd like to recommend that we sustain the appeal for PJ's Deli.
Thank you. If the applicant's appeal is supported by council and at any point in the future they change their menu and begin to do things that create a large amount or an excessive amount of grease, do we have a process in place where we can be notified of that change and verify? Or is there some sort of oversight, maybe an annual check-in to see if there's been a change? Because again, this is granting an appeal for something that is based on a current menu. But if that ever changes and it does create an impact and we don't know it, then we have allowed a break in how we're applying excessive via non-excessive. So my question to you, Mr. Wilkie, is there any way to provide oversight once an appeal's granted?
So the sewer system management plan, the SSMP, which was adopted by the city, I think, early in the 2010s, maybe in the 2000s, I can't remember when it was put in place, is referred to in the permit, the MPDS permit, and is incorporated in that permit, that has a FOG element to it, which discusses how to address the situations with all food establishments. It actually says in that component that all food and service establishments will have either grease trap or grease interceptor. And I think it has some language in there that talks about, look, going through the same, roughly the same process we went through since late 2018, that we could re, re-survey to find out if there's been any changes in any one of the several hundred food establishments that we have in town. So many people know me and the path of least resistance is not me standing in front of you asking for, to uphold an appeal. If I could have found a way that would have allowed a path to allow for this exception that I didn't think would expose the city to a higher risk than it currently has, I would have taken it. I didn't see that, I didn't find that in what I understand is the MPDS permit. So that's why I believe it still is a reasonable expectation to have the appeal come and to have the governing board make that ultimate decision.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosby.
I don't know if council wants further discussion. I don't know if Councilmember Vega, you wanted to make a motion? Is that what you were doing earlier? Or I'll make the motion to grant the appeal to PJ's Deli to not require them to have a grease interceptor.
Okay.
I'll second.
Has moved and seconded? City Attorney.
Since this is a public hearing on an appeal, we do need to have a written decision by council, so I'd ask the maker of the motion to add to the motion that staff will bring back a resolution for the consent calendar at the next meeting to approve the granting of the appeal.
Councilmember Mosby.
We'll admit my appeal adding as required.
Thank you. You still second that, Mr. Vega?
Oh.
Just second the amendment.
Second again, yeah.
Okay.
And I do have a question, City Attorney, if you want to recognize me.
Absolutely.
Mr. City Attorney, it sounds like you need a written confirmation when we have an appeal process with a, for, with a second, so we have to go back to the consent calendar? Is that normal and customary when appeal comes up? Is that an extra step that's necessary? I guess is what I'm asking.
The only reason it's necessary this time is because we haven't prepared a draft resolution for this agenda item. Usually we, we prepare a draft resolution of approval. Usually we prepare a draft resolution of approval that's based on staff recommendation. This time, for this staff report, we didn't prepare a draft resolution, so all we're doing is bringing back that at the next consent calendar, at the next meeting, to be adopted by council.
So in the process of future appeals, I mean, is that going to be the norm? It's more for the public out here that's listening, the appeal process will come to council, they'll get an appeal, it'll have to be put in writing, and then it'll come back for the next agenda as a consent calendar item. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we have motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions regarding this? Before I vote, I will say that I do believe that staff can improve the process of those interactions. I think that is initially where we failed. I do believe that we have policies in place and should apply them equitably, and I don't say equally, I say equitably, and that making an exception is not doing so equitably. So I think the place to focus on improving is how we deliver those requirements, the interaction we have with businesses and the public, and that is a goal that we should strive to improve those relationships. So those of you speaking to that absolutely do have a point, and it is being heard, and we will work on that with staff. So we have the motion on the floor, and we'll take a vote. And that passes three, one, and one abstention. Councilman Starbuck may return to the dais. Item nine is a continuation of the hearing of the former property owner appeal of ruling on the request for reconsideration of the utility director's enforcement of the Lompoc Municipal Court, Section 13.16.040, connection to public sewer required at 2009 West Pine Street, the sewer lateral service protest. And as before, Councilmember Mosby will need to recuse himself.
Is that good enough for you?
Yes, Councilmember Mosby, he needs to recuse himself because he owns property within 500 feet of one of these properties.
Thank you. Mr. Wilkie.
This reconsideration was requested by the city council at the last meeting. I don't see the appellant here, so I'm not sure how we should proceed with this unless there's no need to have him here. This was to, I believe the action was to obtain more information at the council level and then bring it back to us. So I have no additional comments on this item other than what was presented at the last meeting.
So I believe the request came from Councilmember Cordova. Councilmember Cordova, do you have the information you needed to reconsider this?
Well, I did intend to ask some questions to Mr. Sobani today. However, if I could maybe ask some questions of staff, I, there are different considerations that I had, and I don't know if staff would be able to make that determination without Mr. Sobani here. I guess I wouldn't know unless I ask you.
And regarding the legal aspect of this, this is an extension we gave, so in checking in with our city attorney, would it require another extension and another agreement by Mr. Sobani for that continued extension?
Yes. So technically, today is the deadline for the city council to make this decision, and we don't have Mr. Sobani here to agree to extend the deadline. So I suppose that means the city council needs to make a decision tonight. If council wanted to continue the item, you know, we don't know the reason that Mr. Sobani isn't here, maybe something that's completely out of his control. I think we could probably feel comfortable that he would agree to extend the deadline again, but we don't know that for sure. So the council will be taking a slight risk if it didn't make the decision tonight and if it wanted to continue the item, but I have a feeling that he might agree post hoc.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Cordova.
Well, I considered different factors when I considered maybe perhaps the information that was before me, and I did, like I said, I did have some questions for Mr. Sobani. However, even if I asked the questions to staff, I feel like they may, it would still require an agreement from Mr. Sobani himself as to the resolution or, you know, any kind of compromise on the situation. So I don't feel that I need to move it forward unless, you know, I mean, I feel like he knew that this was happening today, but I don't know if anybody else on the council feels that they need to move it forward.
Councilmember Vega.
You know, Mr. Sobani's a pretty well-known figure here, and he's quite an investor here in this city. I would think that this is really important to him, so I'm going to think that there's something here that was out of his control of coming here. So I'd like to ask the council, if we can, for a continuance of this item because we need to have Mr. Sobani here. And I think that for his following and his background in this city, I do not think that he would just miss this meeting if there was not something out of his control. So on his behalf, I think that it would be prudent for us to extend this and ask for a continuation.
Do I have a second on that?
I will agree with you on this, yes.
So we have a motion and a second to allow a continuance to, I believe it would be the next council meeting? Would that be the next soonest we would be able to review this?
It's up to the council as long as staff has time, but I don't think we need any time to prepare for this because we were ready tonight.
Okay. So the step would then be in the morning, you perhaps contact him directly to get immediate notification of that? And if he failed to agree to it, would we need to have an emergency meeting to make a decision on this, or?
I certainly will try to contact him first thing in the morning to get his agreement. If he didn't agree, I think that the council could make a decision at the next meeting and a court. All a court is going to do is order the council to make a decision.
Okay.
So we do that at the next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, we've gotten clarification on what the process would be. Any further questions or discussion by staff? Seeing none, let's vote. And that extension is granted for 01. Councilmember Mosby, you may return to the dais. Councilmember Mosby, please return to the dais. And if you're outside, hello. City Clerk, any written communications?
Nothing more than you've already received.
Thank you. Final oral communication for the evening, two-minute maximum. Please return to the podium or step up for the first time.
Charles Hummer, thank you for your ruling, we appreciate it. And if we do change our menu and there are things that change, we can bring it up with wastewater. But again, limited, we're limited because we have no gas line, so if we add anything, it probably wouldn't be something grease-laden, as it so states in state code and city code, of excessive amounts of grease. But I think there was a good conversation. I'm one to be, I try to be very non-biased when speaking about things, whether it affects my family or not. I love this city, and as a swim coach, there's a family that moved to town, or they're moving to town, and I had a conversation with them, and I try to promote Lompoc, I try to put Lompoc in the best light, and right now with budget woes and some other things, it's hard to remain completely unbiased because I feel I have to tell them the truth about certain things, about whether it be the stabbing that happened with a vagrant D last week, or budget issues that we're dealing with Calpers or whatever. Of course, these are district employees through the school district, they just, both the husband and wife got hired, so they're biased towards their pers. But I know you guys have a hard job, I appreciate all the conversation, pro, con, it doesn't matter. I'm one that believes that if you're not debating in a healthy manner, then nothing can be pushed over and moved over. So thank you.
Council John Lynn, one more time. You know, I'm probably one of the only people that actually has read this entire ND-PES report along with the supplement that I gave you one page out of, and I didn't come away from that with some urgent need to get into this grease regulation, but I am going to go back and read it one more time just to make sure that I didn't miss something because it's about 117 pages and another 50 here of riveting information. And I think it's also going to be interesting to read our sewer system management plan, which up until now I didn't know we had. And as a utility commissioner, I try to read all these things and understand them. I would also share with you that since the last time I was up here, I appeared before the Regional Water Quality Control Board with regard to some salinity issues of the treated effluent from the Mission Hills Community Service District. There was a very in-depth geological report that was alluded to there and presented, and I had a chat with their geologist, he was pretty forthcoming till he realized that I was looking for something from the other side, I think. So I was able to acquire a copy of that, and I will be providing it to the city. I had to send a flash drive up, it's such a large report. But we have, as I've said before, a serious salinity problem in our groundwater, and by the next meeting with some more information that the city has provided to me, I hope to come back to you with some more precise figures. And we're going to need to address that going forward as a community because our water's getting worse and it's not something we're doing. It's something that's happening to the water that's coming into our valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close oral communications and bring it back to council requests, comments, and meeting reports. We'll start with Councilmember Vega.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Cordova.
I don't have anything to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosby.
I went to several meetings, but none at the expense of the city.
Thank you. Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
Thank you. I attended the Memorial Day Remembrance, I also attended a Cabrillo Aquarium Board meeting, and they are doing some exciting things with the fundraising they're having for refurbishing and modernizing the aquarium. So they received a matching grant from the Chumash Tribe, and so if you're interested, they're going to match up to $25,000, so contribute to that amazing part of our community. I attended Explore Lompoc's Travel Riders Reception, where they were hosting travel riders from across the US for three days, and hopefully they came away with exciting experience, and we'll invite people to our hotels. And then I also participated in the Lompoc Valley Community Health Organization's food need discussion and about progress they're making. Regarding the Coastal Commission and the Vandenberg Air Force Beach Management Report, or as we know it, the Snowy Plover, shutting down our beaches, we received a message from the Coastal Commission that instead of being on the July meeting in San Luis Obispo, they have postponed it to the December 11th through 13th, 2019 meeting. That will again be back in Oxnard, so we have a little bit longer in working with the base and the commission regarding broadening our access, and hopefully they are listening to us. So just wanted to let those who were concerned about trying to get things done by the July meeting, that rush isn't there, and if you had plans to attend the July meeting, while you can still get up and speak at the public comment portion at the very beginning, much like ours, because we won't be on the agenda, it may not have as much impact, given it won't be till the December meeting. So I did want the community to know about that postponement and delay. So December 2019 will be on the agenda for Coastal Commission. Please consider attending the LGBTQ 101 workshop here in City Hall on Saturday from 10:00 to noon. As they said, it is free, and it is important that we recognize that we may or may not know someone who is going through this, and it's one thing to come out and it's another thing to be out, and the more supportive we can be of our peers, neighbors, friends, and family, the stronger our community is. The library mentioned the school lunch, and I have a full list that we will get posted in all our public places that are free meals being done by Lompoc Unified School District, and they start next week with school being out. And it's the Anderson Rec Center, Boys and Girls Club, the Y MCA La Canada Elementary, the El Camino Community Center, Fillmore Elementary, Lompoc Valley Middle School, and Lompoc Library. They rotate. You have no paperwork, no application, no ID required, the meals are eaten on-site, food can't be taken off-site, and it's 18 and under. So if you know a family that needs that support this summer, or any kid that just needs that social interaction, please encourage it. The Food Bank is also doing a similar program called Picnic in the Park, and in Lompoc, their two locations are the College Park Apartments and Palm Grove. The College Park Apartments will be at 12:30, and Palm Grove will be at 1:15, and that begins June 10th through August 16th. And again, that is under the age 18 and no paperwork required. So I really think it's important that we make sure our community and those that need that support know about it. So that will be posted on social media for our city website and available in all our physical locations. And last but not least, the AIDS Life Ride will arrive in town on Thursday. They stay in Ryan Park, they'll be out and about in the community. Remember, to promote our community, welcome them, and then be careful on Friday morning if you commute south because they depart out the one and traverse on south. So welcome them to our community, be supportive of it, and just heads up for all the cyclists in town. We will adjourn this Lompoc City Council meeting to the regular meeting at 6:30 PM on June 18th. Thank you.